Nielsen is absent.
Thank you, Bessie Jo. Thanks, Council. So we have three members. That would be a quorum that we can start our meeting. Is that correct, Bessie Jo?
Yeah.
All right. Thanks, everybody, for checking in. If if any one of you on council or Bessie Jo as our clerk, if you see the symbol for Colby Nielsen checking in, let me know so that I can welcome him to the meeting. All right, we have a pretty detailed agenda tonight, and I think it's really well laid out in terms of the time estimate. So hopefully, we won't feel rushed and can can make some good decisions where we need to and put some good thought into all of the action items tonight. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I will stand up and lead us in that, and then we'll move to approve the agenda and consent agenda. So if everyone could stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we will do a voice vote once we make a motion and second it for approval of the printed agenda for the regular city council meeting November 19. May I have a motion to approve this agenda?
Mike, it's motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Thank you, Melanie. A motion has been made and seconded to approve tonight's printed, published agenda for the regular meeting of the City Council November 19, 2020. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Machesek?
Yes.
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember? That's it.
I think it's just the three of us, yeah. So that motion carries and the agenda. Colby, have you been able to join us, Colby Nielsen? Okay, so that motion carries, agenda is approved. We'll move on to the consent agenda, and on the consent agenda, we do a roll call vote. So again, I'll need a motion to approve and a motion to second.
This is Melanie. Go ahead, Mike.
Go ahead, Melanie. Ladies first.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Thank you, Melanie. Thank you, Mike. So we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as printed and published in our packet. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Machesek?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes. Motion carries and our consent agenda is approved. So our first item up after that is public comment. And I was going to ask Bessie Jo if we have received any written comments.
Yes, we received one written comment. One written comment from Tom Sowers. And he writes, Mayor and Council, I would like to start by saying a heartfelt thank you, the mayor, for his participation in the Veterans Day ceremony. Everyone who participated really showed their appreciation for our veterans. The Parks and Rec Department also deserves a pat on the back and credit for the condition of Veterans Park, which was cleared of snow for the ceremony. The snow-free area was a great benefit for the veterans, participants, and the public, many of which are older or experience mobility issues. I would also like to mention to the council that the condition of our American flag, Idaho State flag, and the POW MIA flag were not in a condition worthy of the prominent position in the center of McCall. Their prominent position in Veterans Park deserves high-quality and durable flags that are a pleasure to look at. I would hope the city can find a way to replace the flags in Veterans Park and to keep them in a good condition as symbols of the pride McCall takes in all of its public spaces. Thank you all for your service to the community. Sincerely, Tom Sowers.
Thank you, Bessie Jo. Next item of business is our work session. That's Agenda Bill 20-312. And the title of this agenda bill is Traffic Signage and Placement. We're going to have a discussion and possibly direction to staff. So we've listed this as an action item on our on our agenda. I read the agenda bill just a few minutes ago, and I remembered that one of our council members, Melanie Holmes, had asked to have this on for some really good reasons that she had explained to us. So Melanie is prepared to discuss some thoughts. And on my agenda, it says that Justin, Chief Williams, will present. Chief, take it away.
Okay, Mayor and Council, Justin Williams, Chief of Police, good evening. As Mayor Giles stated, this was facilitated at the request of Councilmember Holmes. It originally began as a discussion regarding the placement of and the erection of no passing on the right signs along Third Street. We had a conversation with Councilmember Holmes, and there was, I believe, a citizen's request or questioning as to why those signs were not available on Third Street as they used to be, apparently. The discussion turned into a broader request to discuss traffic sign placement within the city, how it's determined what signs are going to be placed where, and the protocols and process for that. And so with that, I would really like to turn it over to Councilmember Holmes so she can further explain her thoughts, and we can begin this work session.
Thank you, Justin.
Thanks, Chief Williams.
Go ahead, Melanie.
So as Justin mentioned, I've had several actual requests to explain the the lack of particularly the passing on the right signs that people had remembered, and have the answer on why those are no longer present as they were moved about removed about eight years ago in a assigned decluttering effort, which I, you know, I agree with. You know, our scenic byway is obviously gorgeous, and we don't want to have excess sign clutter there. But I do feel like our traffic has increased to a point where whether or not we believe people read these signs, we need to present some health and safety signs for just the pedestrians that walk along Third Street. So really, my request was more of a request to find out, you know, what truly has been removed, and can we have a discussion about what may be needed in the future, whether, you know, like I said, whether we believe they read them or not. I think that it would be prudent for us to have some of these safety signs in place.
Thank you, Melanie. So, Justin, do you are there any other city staff that you think need to give us some background before we start deliberating and talking about this with you?
I'm scrolling through to see if there's anyone else that's here, and I don't believe the two persons that would be involved in this. They were Michelle and Nathan, and I don't believe that either one of them are here at this point in time. It was prior to my arrival within the city. So but I have done some homework on it in regards to this particular section with the no passing signs. It's really only applicable in the area between Ridley's and Subway's along Third Street, and primarily, it's going to be during the summer. That is the basic location that you have an opportunity to pass on the right because there are no sidewalks, there are no cars parked, and it's that particular stretch. During the winter, you cannot pass simply because of the snow load that is pushed over into the side. That's the storage area. In reviewing this, we have issued no citations in the six years that I've been here for passing on the right. We've had three to four warnings. I would have to look back up and see what it was, but it was minute, and that was the the beginning of the discussion with Councilmember Holmes. With Melanie was that the statistics and the data that we normally use to provide signage for particular locations just doesn't add up for this particular location in passing the or the no passing on the right. We simply don't see those violations. In addition to that, in regards to sign placement, typically, what we look for is data. As you as council is well aware of, the speed signs, the speed zone signs that we put up, the flashing signs, we did data analysis to verify if there was a need for those particular locations. And that, to me, is the most intelligent way to try to do this with any sign that you want to post for traffic. You need to look at, is it a problem or are we making a problem that doesn't actually exist? And so when we look at that, we don't post signs that say you have to wear your seatbelt, or you have to have your car registered, or other things of that nature, or things about trailers and trailer loads and stuff like that that have to do with with health and safety. And so we have not seen this as being an issue. And that developed more into how do we choose where signs go and what signs go up? And there is no written city policy for the placement of a sign. There is no written city policy for identifying those particular locations. It's continued to be in my tenure, in the seven years that I've been here, I should say seven now, not six, that there is a collaborative effort between Public Works and the with Michelle and myself as to identify, is there a location that we're having problems with? And those locations with health and safety typically tend to do with speed. They tend to be with disregarding traffic control devices such as turn signs, stop signs, yield signs, pedestrian crossing signs. They have to do with parking locations and are we seeing an issue? And we get together collaboratively to determine if there is going to be an issue that needs to be addressed. The last thing that we want to do is to over inundate with signage. And you're starting to see this with the speed signs that we have. We have written more tickets on Lit Creek since the signs, speed signs have been posted. And what we're seeing now is that people are just disregarding those speed signs. They've become accustomed to them. They're ignoring them, and we're still seeing continued speeds. So the effectiveness, as we said, as people become accustomed to seeing those signs, the effectiveness goes down.
So can I make a couple of comments, Bob, really quickly?
Yeah, yeah. I would like to hear from everyone on the council, but lead us off.
Okay, so the first thing I want to say is, Justin, since we had that conversation, I've made a point of of driving the loop every day to make sure that, you know, I'm am I seeing what these other people are seeing? And I can honestly tell you that the biggest problem that I've seen is between the yacht club and the hospital turnoff on Lake Street. And every time I've driven that and went to turn into Albertson's, or on Tuesday, I went to the hospital, someone has always passed me on the right, every single time. So so my I guess my comment would be, I get the statistics, but in order to have proper statistics, someone has to be there to see it.
Right, absolutely. I agree with you 100% on that. And when you have one patrol officer on staff, we're not going to see everything. We're simply not. And I know exactly where you're talking about as you're traveling along Lake, passing just around the yacht club, and cars go to turn into Albertson's at that location right there where that side of the road is, and you have that extra wide pathway that we've made for bike lanes or for pedestrians or things of that nature, and people will utilize that. And you're absolutely right.
So so it was it was anytime I've turned on First, anytime I've turned into the businesses just past First, Albertson's, and then the hospital turnoff, I've been passed on the right on all of those. So I mean, I get it. I see it. And I guess my question, the reason why it was important to bring it up is, you know, in the summertime, I get the winter, the winter is not going to be as much of an issue. In the summertime, if a pedestrian does get hit and potentially killed there, what's our liability? I mean, are we are we properly protecting the city by removing signs like that?
I would have to defer to Bill on that, but the liability, I don't believe, would be there simply because we put up a sign. It's the same thing if you with the speed signs, the liability that we had with speeding along Lit Creek is no more increased because we are less increased because we put up the speed signs. And so I don't think that there is a liability that goes up because you don't have that particular sign, because the fact that that we can honestly say that the data doesn't support it. We've had zero accidents. We've had zero pedestrians hit, and I understand trying to be on the front side of it. However, that does not the documentation is not there to show that it is an issue, that there have been problems with that. Now, if we wanted to put those signs up, once you start doing that, then where do we stop? With what signs do we stop posting? What signs do we choose next? And there is already along that, just to say that the clutter aspect, there are already so many signs along that way, no parking from here to there, the snowplow signs, the handicap signs, the business signs, those things, they do get lost in the fold. And so that would be something that that I would think about. I don't know that our liability, I'd defer to Bill, but I don't believe that we would have an increased liability in not posting those signs. I could be wrong. But Bill, your thoughts on that?
And I don't think it increases the liability if you don't have the sign. Generally, sign placement for warning-type signs is part of the Uniform Manual for Traffic Control Devices. And so that there's a whole formula goes through that you look at, is a sign required, and what are the data that goes into making that decision?
So assuming this, Chief Williams, this is Mayor Bob, assuming that we've gone through that process, and that we don't have to have a sign there, I would like to echo what Melanie said. I have personally observed numerous times, as I travel, that same section between the yacht club and the hospital on Highway 55 or Third Street, I repeatedly have people pass me on the right and causing a dangerous situation. So I wonder if we if we think there it's happening, and we need to hear from Councilmember Machesek, but let's assume, let's assume that that's happening. My question for you, Chief, is if we have a patrol officer there and observes that happening time after time, are we are we in a powerful position to issue a citation?
Absolutely.
Illegal passing on the right?
Yes, sir. Simply because the sign is not posted does not mean that a citation can't be issued. It's the same thing as a seatbelt. You're supposed to wear your seatbelt. There's no sign saying that you have to wear your seatbelt. You're eligible for the citation. Same thing with registration, insurance, all of those. Not having it posted does not preclude us from issuing the citation. So it is a warning sign. That falls underneath Nathan in the uniform sign regulations for the for the state and how those are done. He had advised previously that we had looked at that before during this conversation, and that we simply do not have the data. Now, maybe we have to put someone out there to have the data. But another thing you have to understand is that location does not belong to the city of McCall. That location belongs to the state of Idaho. Third Street belongs to the state. Any signs would have to go through the state. And I know that Melanie has reached out to them, and if they could get our support, they would be willing, I think, is that correct, Melanie? I believe it was the conversation, that they said that they would be willing to support us on that.
That is what I heard, yes.
Yes. And so we would have to have the data, which we simply do not have the data. And I would have to look at it to determine what type of violations you would need for that, and if we would have to assign someone to sit there. Because, as I said, we typically have one patrol officer on duty at a time, period. And so
I get all that, but I just wanted to let you know, a number of us have seen that that section that Melanie described does have a problem, in our opinion. And it's and you're and you're right, Chief Williams, in terms of when is it a problem? It's it's usually in the height of the summer, when the traffic is at its at its highest.
Aaron, I believe, Aaron has her hand raised, I think. Aaron?
Hi, Aaron has her hand raised.
Hi, Aaron.
Hi. Yeah, so I wanted to chat quickly, knowing this is coming up. I did a little bit of research on, you know, passing on the right, educational programming in other areas. And obviously, it's, you know, not a unique problem to us, being a big biking and walking community. I'm sure we we might feel it a little bit more. So I was thinking that we have plenty of time until next summer in particular. Most of the messaging talks about things like, what should I do before I pass? You know, what are the things I should be considering before I make a pass? The reasons why passing on the right is dangerous, like, for example, passing a truck without allowing a safe distance is incredibly dangerous, because you don't know what they're going to do. Have I checked my mirrors? You know, is there a bike lane to my right? You know, these types of things. So I think it's pretty possible for us at a very minimal cost to make a big impact in the community using social media and newspaper ads. And if that's something council would like us to plan for for the summer, I can factor that into my public relations platform this year and come back to you with some messaging for your approval.
Thanks, Aaron. I appreciate that offer. I think that would definitely be definitely should be part of our strategy. So I'd like to hear from Councilmember Machesek, and I understand, Colby Nielsen, you have joined us. So I'd like to hear from from and then Council Member Nielsen.
Thanks, Bob. Yeah, I appreciate what Aaron's suggestion there is. I understand the concern. I understand everything that everyone said, and I also, you know, want to do my question was the same as yours, Bob, for Justin, was, you know, if a police officer is behind a vehicle, the vehicle then chooses to infringe on the bike path and go around a vehicle to the right, would that officer then have the right to give them a citation, which they do? You know, I think that the question of having too many signs is a valid question. And I don't and there, as Justin pointed out, just a handful of examples of things that we know to be responsibilities as a driver in law, that there are many, many more examples that he could give, or that any of us could give, that we know are rules of the road and that are laws that we need to abide by. And we don't need to have signs for them. So I don't know that signs, increasing the number of signs on our roadways is is as impactful as far as changing behavior for people that may continue to do these things anyways, when they're already against the law. Those would be my thoughts.
Thank you, Mike. Colby, what's your thoughts?
Yeah, same same here. I don't feel like signage, additional signage probably is going to solve that problem, unless it's the welcome sign into McCall that says, welcome to McCall, please slow down, something along those lines. I'd have to disagree with Aaron that we're a biking and pedestrian community. I think that's our fundamental flaw, that 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 we do need to improve our our pedestrian bike travel through town more, which would would help with the traffic congestion. And lastly, and I think most importantly, the real solution to this problem is having sidewalks all the way through town. You're not going to run up onto a sidewalk to pass someone on the right. Those are my thoughts.
Good point. Yeah, thanks. You know, those are those are good points. Melanie, did you want to have any one last shot at this? Your thoughts after you've heard from everybody?
You know, I I would I would welcome any creative thoughts that anyone could come up with, because, you know, we've seen already what can happen when the Streets Department comes up with some creative ideas on specifically for East Lake Street with those bollards. I mean, that made a huge difference this summer with wrong way traffic. And I agree with Colby that we're not as much of a biking, walking community. And that's, I mean, I keep my bike at the office all summer long, but I feel like I'm going to die if I go out there on it. So, you know, I think that obviously, we do need sidewalks. But in the meantime, how are we going to keep our community safe from from some of this driving behavior that we're seeing? We have increased traffic. We know that.
Thank you, Melanie. So let me try to summarize real, real briefly our possible direction to staff. I think we are interested, as a council, in having some presence next summer, Chief Williams, to see if what we're seeing is commonplace. And probably would be good to program some time in to do that for our officers, specifically on that section that Melanie described. And I think we are interested in having Aaron help us on communicating our desires for no passing on the right and driving safely in the downtown corridor. And start with that, and then at the end of the summer, get give us some feedback on on, you know, the council will provide feedback on what we observe. And the chief and Aaron could provide us feedback on on your parts of this.
Okay.
And maybe then and and probably not take any action on signage until we've done that.
Yes, sir.
That's that's what I'm hearing. I think council will be fine with that.
You know, as the responsible party for traffic and parking within the city, I will always defer to data-driven results. And that is something that we can hang our hats on. And so we will attempt to collect appropriate data to determine the amount of the issue, and then we'll bring that back to council at the end of the summer.
Thank you, Chief Williams. Thank you, Aaron. Really appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
We're gonna move along to public hearings. We have two agenda bills that are listed under the public hearing. First one is Agenda Bill 20-316. It's a request for approval of the Flynn subdivision final plat. And then the second public hearing is request to approve Resolution 20-23 to adopt an airport fee schedule. So both of those will be managed under our public hearing rules, and I'll take us through the steps, help facilitate that. For the Flynn subdivision, Agenda Bill 20-316, I will open the public hearing and provide the purpose, and then Morgan Besaw will help us help guide us through the steps on the application. So the purpose of the public hearing is to consider the application of Flynn subdivision final plat, SUB 20-01, and associated development agreement. As I said earlier, the public hearing is formally opened, and Morgan Besaw will provide comments on the application.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me?
Yes, Morgan.
Okay, great. Yes, as the mayor mentioned, this is for subdivision 2001, Flynn subdivision. This will likely look familiar to you. It was brought before to the City Council on July 23 of this year as a preliminary plat application, and it has come back as a final plat. I guess before I move forward, can you also see the plat on the screen?
Yes.
Great. So this is a subdivision final So this is a subdivision final plat application to divide an existing lot of just under four acres into eight lots with a total of seven lots of half an acre each and one lot of about .4 acres respectively. The zoning of these parcels is R4, which is roughly a quarter acre lot. So these lots are double that size, so it's well within the allowed density. Due to the small size of the development, neither a PUD nor a park's contribution are required, which is why it's just a subdivision final plat and, and not a PUD. In the summer, when it came by as a preliminary plat, there was no associated development agreement. The applicant has proposed the attached development agreement to defer completion of the public improvements until after the recording of the plat. It's a busy building season, hard to get contractors, so they're hoping to record the plat this winter and then finish those improvements next summer, which would be undergrounding of the overhead utilities, finishing installing the stub outs for, you know, water and sewer. So it's very, very similar. It's almost identical to what you saw in July. The existing development will be accessed, I'm sorry, the development will be accessed by the existing Flynn lane. Flynn is not designated for any additional pathways improvements per, per the McCall area's pathways master plan. During the McCall area planning and zoning commission's regularly scheduled October 6, 2020 meeting, they recommended unanimous approval of this application to city council. So I did send out a few extra documents today to supplement what was in the meeting packet. There is an updated estimate of costs, so that's in association with the development agreement. So a development agreement comes through when someone wants to record the plat prior to finishing the public improvements. And so the development agreement, you know, lists those conditions, lists what needs to be done. And then there's a, a cost estimate saying how much we estimate those improvements to cost. And then there's always a financial guarantee. So the things that came through today in email were the updated estimated costs, as well as a letter of credit, draft letter of credit from the developer's bank, saying that, you know, these funds are available. So if for some reason the applicant was unable to finish these improvements, the money is available for the city to hire someone to finish those improvements. Because once we have the plat and those lots are sold, you know, anyone who buys them would expect that those, those improvements were finished. So I just wanted to explain why I sent those extra documents out today. And I will run through the conditions. These are the exact same conditions of approval that you approved in July. The only modification being that, I think there was 11 when you saw it last time, and now there's nine, because two of them were to provide things to me before this meeting, such as, you know, updated cost estimate and updated plat showing easements. So I think that's the only difference. If you look at this plat, there are now drainage easements going down the lot lines between each, each parcel, so that, you know, neighbors can direct their inner stormwater to those easements and run forward to the, the ditch or swale along Flynn lane rather than dumping stormwater onto their neighbors. So that is why those are, those are there. I believe those are the only modifications. And running through these conditions again, but as I mentioned, they are the same ones you approved previously. So one, prior to recording of the survey or any site work, the applicant shall receive final engineering approval. Two, prior to issuance of a building permit for any lot, proof of sewer permit shall be required. Three, all existing overhead utility lines shall be relocated underground into a utility easement along the southern property boundary. Four, prior to execution and recording of the plat, the applicant shall construct all required improvements. Alternatively, the applicant shall obtain approval of a development agreement with the city and shall provide financial assurances for any deferred improvements. So that relates to the development agreement coming in tonight. Five, pursuant to McCall City Code, the final plat shall be filed with the county within 18 months of approval by the city council. Otherwise, the final plat shall become null and void unless they have previously requested an extension by the council. Six, prior to execution and recording of the subdivision final plat, the applicant shall provide digital files of the plat in accordance with our digital submission standards. Seven, prior to execution and recording of the plat, all easement shall be indicated on the final plat and shall be formally documented with signed declarations and recorded. A full set of as-built record drawings of improvements intended for public use and maintenance shall be provided to the city within 60 days of completion of construction. And nine, if a local improvement district is formed by the property owners on Flynn lane for the paving of the street before May 1, 2022, then the applicant shall be responsible for the cost of the construction along the length of the subdivision to the center line and shall participate in the LID. And I did not mention, but I should have mentioned, that I have received no public comment on this application.
Thank you, Morgan. Morgan, in our, in our process, we sometimes have the applicant present. Is Mr. Wise on the call tonight? And will you be asking him to present a quick summary of the project?
I do believe Mr. Wise is on the phone in case anyone has any questions or if he wants to add anything to my summary. Tyson?
City council and mayor, yes, I'm on the line. And thank you, Morgan, for your presentation. I don't have anything else to add, but I'm willing to answer any questions that the council may have or comments.
Thank you, Tyson. Appreciate it. So we'll go to that next step where council gets to ask questions, if they have any, of city staff. So that would be Morgan or of Tyson Wise, Mr. Wise. So let me start with Melanie. Let you go first.
I have no questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Melanie. Mike, you're next.
It looks all straightforward to me, and we've seen it before, so I don't have any questions, but I'm, I appreciate the applicant being here and appreciate Morgan's explanation of where we're at in the process and what we're looking at. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Colby?
No, I don't think I have any questions on this one. Probably had all of my questions last time we saw.
Thank you, Colby. And Morgan and Tyson, I don't have any further questions. So appreciate the presentation and the offer. We'll now, I, I got a quick question though, Morgan, on the written correspondence. I believe you said that we have received none to date. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. We do provide for three minutes per person, public comment on this call, either through the team's environment or through a phone call. So Bessie Jo, do you help me manage that as a city clerk? Do we have anyone that would like to make public comment during this hearing?
I only see one non-staff caller. It's 3553. I don't know if they are calling for the public hearing.
Let me ask. So is there anyone currently on this call that would like to make public comment? And if so, you'll need to unmute your phone and request three minutes. So hearing, hearing none. There is no need for applicant rebuttal or rebuttal from the city staff. So the mayor will close the public hearing and public testimony is hereby closed. No, yeah, we're, we're done with that part. So now deliberation by the council will discuss the evidence that we heard tonight and that we heard at a previous meeting and make a decision whether or not we would like to approve this application, approve with conditions or deny the application. So, Melanie, where, what are you thinking that we should do to proceed as a council?
Well, I see no issues with this final plat. And quite honestly, it's, you know, it's, it's a nice looking development. So, you know, just going through all the comments through P and Z, I, I don't see any reason that this should not pass.
Thank you, Melanie. Councilmember Machesek?
Nope, I don't see any issues, and I would suggest that we move, move forward.
Move forward to approve. Thank you, Councilmember Machesek. Council President, Colby?
No, I don't see any issues on moving forward.
Thank you. This is Mayor Bob. I'm good to move ahead on this. So, let's see. I'm just looking at the language in my script to make sure. Yep. Okay. So in our agenda bill, we have a motion to approve the findings of fact, conclusions of law. And it's, and it's about three sentences long, but it's, we would need someone to read that and make a motion to approve those.
Um, Bob, this is Morgan. I apologize for cutting in. I realized, looking at the development agreement, I sent you the updated cost estimates, but I didn't put them into the development agreement itself. So the motion would probably have to include the development agreement amended with the updated cost estimates.
Okay, so help me out, Morgan. Do you have the agenda bill in front of you? I just need some help with, with the language there.
You would just say, Bob, if I may, that they would need to approve the findings of fact, conclusions of law, decision documents for Flynn lane with the development agreement amended to include the updated cost estimates. Would that be correct?
Yeah, that's all I was trying to say. Thank you.
Amended to, an associated development agreement amended to do what, Bessie Jo?
Uh, with the updated cost estimates.
Okay, amended with the updated cost estimate. All right, would someone from council please make that motion?
Bob, this is Melanie. I'd like to make a motion to approve the findings of fact, conclusions of law, decision documents for Flynn subdivision, SUB-20-01, and associated development agreement with, as amended with updated cost estimates, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Thank you, Melanie. Is there a second?
Mike, second.
Thank you, Mike. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the findings of fact, conclusions of law, decision documents for Flynn subdivision, SUB-20-01, and associated development agreement as amended with the updated cost estimates, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Machesek?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion carries. So that approval has been made formally. Thank you, Mr. Wise, for joining us tonight, and thank you, Morgan, for briefing us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to our next hearing. It's Agenda Bill 20-311, request to approve Resolution 20-23 to adopt airport fee schedule. And this is an action item as well. The purpose of this public hearing is to consider approval of Resolution 20-23 to adopt airport fee schedule. As mayor, I hereby open the public hearing, and Airport Manager Rick Stein will present the proposed fees to council.
Uh, good evening, council. Good evening, council. Can you hear me?
Yes, Rick.
Excellent. And I will start here. Annually, industry standards are to, that are to look at airport rates and charges and to update them as necessary. So this will be my first go around with this. And over the course of, since I've been here, I've noticed some items that do need to be changed. To kind of summarize, it's a few changes to the daily aircraft parking rate, a clarification of the CPI adjustment to the ground lease rate, some lease documentation fees, and authorization for an administrative fee on certain activities in order to offset some of the costs incurred by the airport and staff in order to do certain, certain projects for, for airport tenants. You, this is Resolution 20-23. And so there is a memo involved with it. It involves changes. Well, first off, it involves not changing the fuel flow each fee because it has been, it is at industry average. Aircraft parking included some increases to some larger aircraft. The new land, the new land lease, it's the same rate that was originally passed in 2017, but I placed the two CPI adjustments that have happened since then into the, into what you're looking at. The current fee, uh, the lease preparation fee, current fee is $200, but it's been more expensive than that as far as employee time to actually get this through. So recommended 300. Lease cancellation fee of $50. And survey work, if a tenant, not the airport, but if a tenant requests survey work to be done, there'll be a authorization to charge a fee for that. Construction staff review fee for new, any new hangar construction, which follows a similar fee that planning and zoning already has for a design review. And an administrative fee for projects that may be done by the airport staff for tenants. So, and then all the other rates and charges have been, no recommended to, changes to any of those. And in the memo, it shows where I received the information on what other airports had charged, what they charged for their airport rates and charges in this area. So that, that pretty much summarizes what I'm requesting.
Thank you, Rick. Hey, before we get into questions, would you clarify for us? I was just reviewing our agenda bill and the associated materials. I didn't see whether this has been run through the airport advisory committee. Has that, has this been reviewed by that committee?
Uh, no, no, it hasn't.
Okay. All right, thank you for clarifying that. Let me go back to my script, make sure I stay on task. Okay, the next step is for council to ask any questions of our airport manager, Rick Stein. Melanie?
None for me. I appreciate all the thorough information, though.
Thank you, Melanie. Mike?
No questions. Thank you.
Colby?
I think that all the recommended changes. I think that all the recommended changes seem pretty reasonable. I I am kind of curious, though, about um, why this hasn't been run by the airport advisory committee.
Oh, between it's um, it was, I've written it uh, in between the time that the airport advisory commit- committee has already met and when this city council meeting is being held. Uh, if you, if council prefers, uh, we could table it till uh, the second city council meeting in December. Uh, so the uh, to take it in front of the airport advisory committee.
Um, with I think that's our preference. We really like to we, we do value their input. Um, they don't make decisions, but they're an advisory committee and I think um, I think they would feel a little more valued if they were fully briefed on this. And that we got to hear their opinion before we make our final decision.
Okay, then I will, oh, sorry, sir.
I was just, I was just gonna-
Do the public hearing part, though.
Yes, we will continue the public hearing tonight, Bessie Jo. I understand that. But I was just gonna say, Rick, um, that's kind of that's how we do like the Gulf rates as an example, when Eric McCormick, our superintendent, um, brings us new increases in prices. Um, it's, it's usually run through and then, you know, the, the advisory committee, in that case, the Gulf advisory reviews it. And then we hear their comments, whether they're in favor or not, and then council makes a decision. So I wouldn't, I would encourage council to take that tact, even though delays us a few weeks. Melanie, would you be good with that?
That works for me, absolutely.
Mike, you good with that?
Yes, I'm good with that. Thanks, Bob. Good suggestion.
Colby, you and I are good with that. So um, now, to go back to Bessie Jo's advice to me, we need to then uh, make a motion to continue the public hearing and hear from anyone that's on tonight. And then when we bring this up again in December, is that how we manage that?
Um, well, maybe we can have Bill weigh in on this because I don't know if if they want to leave the public hearing open or do they want to complete the public hearing and just not take action? What do you recommend, Bill?
I'd recommend that you leave the public hearing open and you table the hearing until the second meeting in December.
Thank you, Bill. So let's get a motion to make that happen and enter it into the record. Uh, please make a motion and then I'll ask for a second on that.
We leave this public hearing open until the second meeting in, or is it the second meeting in December?
Yes, that's correct.
I'll get you a date.
I believe the second meeting in December is the seventeenth.
That's correct.
That is correct. All right, should we have a second?
I'll second that, Bob.
Thank you, Melanie. Motion has been made and seconded to continue, keep the the public hearing open until council addresses this um, agenda item in the second meeting in December, which is December seventeenth. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Machesek?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion carries. I forgot to ask, though, have we received any written correspondence? Um, and the answer is no. Okay. All right. Thank you, Rick. We'll continue on and help you on this uh, in the second meeting in December. Appreciate you presenting this information and um, we'll keep, we'll stay posted and brief us in December on what the advisory committee thinks.
Will do.
All righty. So now we're into the report section, agenda bill twenty dash three one three. We're going to hear from the McCall Historic Preservation Commission, their annual report. And Walt will be uh, briefing us on that. He is our chair of the Historic Preservation Commission.
Mr. Mayor and council members, um, thanks and good evening. I'm Walt Slajewski, four seventy-four Blackhawk Lake Drive. So um, first of all, thanks for the opportunity to give you a quick update on what we've been up to, what the commission has been up to over the past year and some of our plans for uh, two thousand and twenty-one. I, you've all received a a brief summary from me, so I won't go through all of it. I do want to highlight a couple of key accomplishments for the year. And uh, we did choose to focus this year a lot on education and promotion, so both for our residents of the McCall and Valley County, but also for visitors around um, the history and heritage of of our city and and the people and our buildings and so forth. So that was a big focus for us and and one of the key accomplishments was, and I think I mentioned this last November when I was here, was uh, in the very, about January of this year, we introduced our app on both the Apple and Android platforms. Um, this is an app that showcases eleven properties within the city of McCall. It's a walking slash uh, cycling slash uh, driving uh, tour, if you will. Um, uh, people who use it can use it in whatever way they want to, but it's pretty clever. It shows you uh, where the properties are relative to where you are, how to get there, and also includes history, includes photography and a number of other things. Um, so it's uh, we've got, as you saw in my notes, about sixty-three downloads so far on the Apple platform and about fifty downloads on the Android platform. So we're excited about that. Uh, a lot of promotion done at the winter carnival, the city Facebook page, website and social media posts. So I do want to um, thank Garrett Mapp for all his work and help, the technical work in making this happen and certainly to Aaron Greaves for all of her help on the promotion, but we're very excited about that um, that app and will be adding to that app as we go um, into two thousand and twenty-one and and beyond. Uh, the second item I want to highlight is we did do an open house at the McCall City Jail during the first weekend of the winter carnival last year and um, it was the first time the jail's actually been opening in quite some time and and we had just a tremendous number of visitors. I I don't have a number, but we were certain focus there was, again, just education and uh, telling people about the app, telling people about the uh, different historic properties and also showcasing our video on the history of McCall. Uh, the, the last item I want to highlight for two thousand and twenty is, and although it's not an officially part of the commission, it's a close cooperation with the Central Idaho Historic Museum. And it's important because the, of course, the property is owned by the city, but we have been working with uh, the museum as they've been restoring a nineteen thirty-seven um, carpenter shop. And um, uh, with some grants that have been um, procured from the state historic preservation organization as well as the Idaho Heritage Trust. A lot of work this year by volunteers to get that building stabilized and to get it really ready uh, with um, cleaning it up, new wainscoting, new light, uh, new lighting, et cetera. And the whole vision of this is to provide a um, another meeting space for the community of McCall, both for for meetings, for board meetings, for uh, informal meetings and for presentations. It's, it's a wonderful space. It'll draw more people onto that museum site, which we're excited about. And um, you know, our hope is, and as we're working through the winter to get some, uh, we'll order um, furniture for it, but our hope is if we can actually put people in that building next year, that'll be a just a wonderful addition to the city of McCall for our residents and visitors to be able to to get onto that site, learn more about the history of the, of the museum and and McCall and and use a wonderful building for their meetings. Um, I'll move on to two thousand and twenty-one. Again, I'm not going to cover it all, but a couple of uh, things we're really excited about. One, you know, as, as, of course, the pandemic will not slow down and we, you know, we fully expect that it will, will be constrained by that next year, but we do think there are a number of things we can do from a promotions perspective, just to continue to raise the visibility of what we're uh, around our history and our and and heritage. We are going to begin the development of our second edition of our documentary. Uh, this is really uh, talking about our transition, the transition of the city of McCall from from a, a city that was predominantly driven by the timber industry and and the mill and and so forth to one that's more, of course, driven more recreation and and some of the things that we're known for now. And so we're focused, it's really kind of a nineteen forty moving forward kind of a picture. So we're working on that. Uh, we are going to expand uh, the historic tour. We're going to focus on some, add some additional properties that are in existence today, but also uh, an area that we talk or uh, uh, an item we call lost treasures. So we are going to talk about some of the buildings and history of those buildings that are no longer here, like the mill and like Tom McCall's house and like the railroad and so forth. Uh, we, we did build last year a um, a cycling tour of historic McCall. It's somewhat built on the same set of properties that the walking tour is built on. We worked with the Parks and Recreation Department. We got it all kind of constructed and then with the pandemic and just timing, we decided to shelve it. But again, our hope is next year that it's a, you know, we can properly socially distance um, cyclists and and we can, we can pull this off a couple of times in the summer next year. Uh, two last things, we are working on updating our historic preservation plan, sections of it. We don't plan to to invest to update the entire plan, but we do feel there are some sections that need some updating and we're going to invest some energy into that. And finally, and I know Kurt Wolf is on the, on the line, but there's a, a, we're doing, beginning to research and to consider and working with Parks and Rec on some informational signage around um, around cambium peeled trees. And I don't know how many, how many people are familiar. I wasn't familiar up until about a month ago about what these are. But there's, these are trees that are, in fact, you'll find them all dotted through the uh, Pat uh, National Forest, but we actually have one of these trees in our Rotary Park. Um, these are, these are trees where the, the, the bark has been peeled off by Native Americans many, many, many years ago. And this was used as sustenance for our Native Americans and their animals in the early springtime every year because the bark and the cambium layer carried a lot of uh, nutrients and so forth that they, that they use for sustenance. Uh, we actually have one of these trees in Rotary Park and we think it's just a, it's a wonderful uh, story to talk about our Native Americans and how they used um, the area that McCall now in McCall. And we're just doing a lot of the research into this. We're going to work with Parks and Rec um, department to see if this makes sense and uh, we think it's a wonderful story to tell. So with that, I'll leave it at that. I'll happy to answer any questions. That's the highlights of uh, two thousand and twenty and and our thoughts for two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you, Walt, for a great report and um, and joining us live tonight. We really appreciate hearing from you. We're very proud of the, of your commission that you manage and chair and I would like to give each member of council a chance to ask, not only ask you questions, but um, perhaps pass along some words of praise. So we'll start with Melanie.
Congratulations, Walt. That was a wonderful report. Um, I just, it's so amazing to me how much you guys accomplish every year. I mean, since I've been with city council, it's, it's just been one thing after another that just wows me and I love, love to share all of this with my clients through my real estate job. So thank you so much.
Mike?
Yeah, thanks, Walt. Great presentation. Good work. Appreciate your involvement and um, yeah, thank you for everything.
Colby?
No, I don't have any questions. I'd like to echo everyone's phrase here. You guys do a great job and it's really nice that we've got a dedicated group of folks uh, who are preserving the history of our community. It's, it's extremely important. So, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Colby. Thank you, Walt. Please pass along um, our praise and appreciation to all the members of the Historic Preservation Commission. And let them know that it really makes a difference. It adds to the quality of our life, the things that you're doing. So keep up the good work on that and thanks for joining us tonight.
Great. Thanks very much for your uh, thoughts. I will do that. And also just uh, thanks to the city of McCall and and all the partners we have there. Lots of uh, great help for us in in all the things we're able to accomplish. So thank you. Have a good evening.
Good evening. Our next item is part of the business agenda, agenda bill twenty dash three one eight. It's a request for approval of rezone ordinance, rezoning the property of McCall Valley Storage Condominiums from an R one residential to C C Community Commercial. This is an action item. And on my agenda bill, it says, or my script, it says, Bessie Jo, you'll, you'll present tonight for us?
Yes, um, I will. I, so this is an item um, that has been to the council before. Um, so the council held a public hearing on July eleventh of two thousand and nineteen uh, to consider this uh, provo- proposed zoning map amendment. Um, the uh, council uh, held that public hearing and did adopt this ordinance. Unfortunately, this ordinance did not get published, uh, nor did it get recorded. So we just need to um, go through the process to adopt it again so it can be properly published and recorded.
Okay, thanks for that explanation. And on, on the agenda bill, there are two items. Uh, the first is to suspend the rules, read by title only. That's an action item. Uh, what ordinance number is this?
This is nine nine six. And again, this is um, this uh, for point of reference is over on um, Rio Vista, the McCall Valley Storage Condominiums. And it's a rezone from R one to Community Commercial.
All right. So we've been fully briefed on this. It's just a procedural uh, fix, you might say, to make sure that it gets recorded correctly and in the record.
And Morgan's on the line if anybody has any questions.
All right. Let me do a quick sweep. Council, have any questions? Melanie?
Nope. Thank you.
Mike, Mike, you good?
I'm good.
Colby?
Uh, no. No question, so I guess.
Okay. And I don't have any further questions. So the recommended action is to suspend the rules, read by title only, one time only, ordinance number nine nine six. And then uh, we would, from there, go to the second recommended action, which is to adopt this same ordinance. So starting with the first one, would council please make a motion to suspend the rules?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
And read by title only, one time only, ordinance number nine nine six?
Sorry, hold on, hold on. Sorry, I lost my uh, I lost my packet here on my computer. Um, oh darn, hold on, just a second. Okay, so my packet doesn't actually say that. Hold on, just a second.
So it, it's fairly straightforward. Listen up here and I'll read it. Recommended action in our packet says, suspend the rules and read by title only, one time only, ordinance nine nine six.
So moved.
All right. Anyone want to second that?
Sorry, I just found it.
I'm sure, Bob, I'll second it. And I also want to uh, just for clarification, this all occurred before I was on city council. This is only procedural issue, but just for the record, I did purchase one of the storage condominiums at this property um, this summer.
Thank you for disclosing- Thank you for disclosing that. All right. So I think we're ready for a roll call vote on this, on this first action.
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Machazek?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion carries.
I'll read it.
So that's right. Let's read by title only, and then I'll move on to the next item. Thank you, Bessie Jo.
Ordinance 996, an ordinance of the city of McCall Valley County, Idaho, rezoning certain real property, 3.02 acres in size located adjacent to and south of 1.47 acres with an address of 185 Rio Vista Boulevard in the city of McCall from R1 residential, one dwelling unit per acre to CC Community Commercial, providing for related matters and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Second recommended action is to adopt ordinance number 996, rezone, approve the publication of the summary, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. We have a motion to do that, to adopt this ordinance.
Let's try this again. I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 996, rezone, approve the publication of some summary, and authorize the mayor to sign all documents.
Thank you, Melanie. Is there a second?
Mike, second.
Thank you, Mike. A motion has been made and seconded to adopt ordinance number 996, rezone, approve the publication of the summary, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. We have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Machazek?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Nielsen?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you, council. That can move on. Second business agenda item is number 20, Agenda Bill 20-315, request to prove, to approve Resolution 20-24, adopting the amendment to McCall Municipal Airport's Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Program. This is an action item as well, and Rick will help us, will lead us through this agenda bill.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Airports that receive AIP grants are required to comply with grant assurances. And one of the grant assurances relates to disadvantaged business enterprises. Any airport or sponsor who receives more than $250,000 in a federal year for planning or development of an AIP fund project is required to have a DBE program plan in place. Now, the attached document is the recommended changes to the airport's DBE plan. Mostly, it is just a update of what's out there. And this was prepared by TO engineers. And I'm looking to bring it to council to approve the resolution and the disadvantaged business enterprise plan.
Thank you, Rick. Any questions for Rick Stein on, on this resolution and the intent? Melanie?
No, sue.
Mike?
No questions.
Colby?
Well, it looks pretty straightforward.
I agree, council. It looks, it looks straightforward, and it is an internal issue that probably doesn't have to be brought before the advisory committee. So let's proceed on the recommended action, approve Resolution 20-24 to adopt the amended McCall Municipal Airport's Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Program, authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. May I have someone make that motion in a second?
We approve Resolution 2024 to adopt the amended McCall Municipal Airport's Disadvantaged Business Enterprise DBE program and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Mike, second.
Thank you, Colby. Thank you, Mike. A motion has been made and seconded to approve Resolution 20-24 to adopt the amended McCall Municipal Airport's Disadvantaged Business Enterprise DBE program and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. We have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilmember Machazek?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
That's it? It's all four of us, right?
Yep.
All right. The motion carries. Thank you, council. Good job on that, Rick.
Mayor, the next item, AB 20-319, we need to pull it. It's not ready.
Okay. All right.
So we'll move to 320.
Okay. So number 319 will be, we'll, we'll bring that up at a future meeting, correct?
At a future meeting.
All right. Thank you. So moving along on my script. Okay, so Agenda Bill 20-320, request approval of Resolution 20-26, adopting an ADA non-discrimination statement and an ADA grievance procedure. And Bessie Jo will present this. This is an action item.
Yeah, so we adopted these procedures back in 2010, so it's time to do some updating. So local governments with 50 or more employees are required to adopt and publish procedures for resolving grievance grievances arising under Title II of the ADA, which is the American Disabilities Act. A grievance procedure sets out a system for resolving complaints of disability discrimination in a prompt and fair manner. Once the city establishes this grievance procedure under the ADA, it will be distributed to all department heads. Copies will be posted in public spaces of public buildings and on the city's website. It will also be published in Star News. So as direct recipients of federal aid dollars, we must have our own Title VI program, or we will not be eligible to receive any federal aid dollars. In 2010, council adopted an ADA non-discrimination statement and ADA grievance procedure. And now it's time to update those procedures. We have Resolution 20-26 to adopt the non-discrimination statement and the grievance procedure updates.
Thank you, Bessie Jo. Thanks for keeping us current. Time goes by pretty fast. So it's always good to review stuff like this.
Bill was very helpful.
Thank you, Bill, for helping us with that. Any questions for Bessie Jo or Bill Nichols? Melanie?
None here. Thank you.
Thanks, Melanie. Mike?
None.
Thank you, Mike. Colby, you good with this?
I'm good with it. Thank you.
I'm good with it as well. So let's move to the recommended action approving this resolution. Need a, someone to make a motion in a second, please.
I move we approve Resolution 20-26, adopting an ADA non-discrimination statement and an ADA grievance procedure and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
I'll second, Bob.
Thank you, Colby. Thank you, Melanie. Motion has been made and seconded to approve Resolution 20-26, adopting an ADA non-discrimination statement and an ADA grievance procedure and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. We have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Machazek?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, council. Our next item on the agenda is Agenda Bill, let's see, Agenda Bill 20-321. And it's a request approval of Resolution 20-27, adopting an effective communication policy. Bessie Jo will present this to us. It's an action item.
Hello, council. It's me again. People who have vision, hearing, or speech disabilities, communication disabilities, use different ways to communicate. For example, people who are blind may give and receive information audibly rather than in writing. And people who are deaf may give and receive information through writing or sign language rather than through speech. The ADA requires that Title II entities, state and local governments, communicate effectively with people who have communication disabilities. The goal is to ensure that the communication with people with these disabilities is equally effective as communication with people without disabilities. Currently, our website is ADA compliant, and staff is working on setting up an accessibility page that will describe all the accessible features of our website. Attached is a resolution policy statement for effective communication, a communications guide, and U.S. Department of Justice ADA requirement for effective communication. I've also been working quite a bit with the city of Boise's ADA coordinator and working with her on how they do their different effective communications and stuff. So she's been really very helpful and we're working on some ways to get the council meetings to be able to stream live and some ways that we can make them even more accessible than they already are.
So those, those kinds of new ideas would be encouraged and allowed under, if we pass this resolution?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
All right, council. You feel, how are you feeling about this moving forward? Melanie?
Feeling pretty good.
Good to go. All right, Mike?
Good to go.
Colby?
Looks good to me.
Looks good to me. Thank you, Bessie Jo, for updating this and for coordinating with other cities that are doing a good job with it. We certainly want to do the best we can. All right. I'm going to look for a motion to approve the Resolution 20-27 with the wording in our agenda bill. And then someone to second this.
Bob, this is Melanie. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 20-27, adopting effective communication policy to reasonably ensure that persons with disabilities are provided with access to city services and information equally effective with that provided to persons without disabilities, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Thank you, Melanie. Thank you, Mike. A motion has been made and seconded to approve Resolution 20-27, adopting an effective communication policy to reasonably ensure that persons with disabilities are provided with access to city services and information equally effective with that provided to persons without disabilities, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. We have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Machazek?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Thank you, council. That motion carries. We are now to our standing agenda item of the COVID-19 update. And Chief Williams and city manager, and that's Spickard, will help us with that. So take it away. A lot, a lot's been happening. At least we've been reading about it. So give us the, give us the good summary, the information we really need to remember.
Okay, we will do that. Apologize for the delay. Caught me in the middle of a sandwich. So, all right. So for today, November 19th, as, as we know, there was a stage regression to stage two from stage three, according to the, the state and from the governor. The positivity rate was up at 16.9% last week. And so we are currently the second highest in the U.S. with our positivity rate. We were that way before the stage two regression, when we regressed to stage three. We remain there. We have the seventh highest rate in the U.S. at 101 new cases per 100,000 persons. And it doesn't look like it's going to slow down. Stage two regression order prohibits gatherings of more than 10 people with a few exceptions. Bars and restaurants, people have to be seated, no standing, social distancing strictly enforced, no changes to sports, church, political gatherings, and physical distance and sanitization is required. Today, as was noted, Boise and Meridian have taken steps to close many venues, to enforce, enact stricter regulations, and to oblige, establish measures for the closing of their city facilities. For the city of McCall, the EOC met, and that's our Emergency Operations Center for the COVID-19 Task Force for our city, we met in an emergency meeting on Friday, the 13th of November. And we developed yet another addendum to the original City of McCall Action Plan for Rebound Idaho. As we discussed the last time when we regressed to stage three, what we did is we went back through the document and determined what we would need to do for a stage two regression. For a stage two regression, we developed the addendum, and then the notice was sent to all the staff regarding this change in policy and procedure. And I will refer back to the document that was sent out to them and just highlight some of the changes that, that were added to this, one of which was that vulnerable or high-risk employees should contact their department head to make special arrangements if necessary to facilitate a safe working environment. Department heads will continue to staff accordingly as far as the rotation of staff. City facilities would remain open with public restrictions pertaining to social distancing and occupancy numbers. We have yet to close the facility. We're still open. There is the mandate that people will remain, maintain at least six feet of distance indoors. It's no longer, if possible, it is, you're going to maintain six feet. We will continue with no in-person meetings unless they are subject to the state of Idaho open meeting laws. If that you're having a in-person meetings, you will maintain a minimum of six feet of physical distance, and you will also limit that to no more than 10 persons. The order, as it came out, as I said, limited the gatherings of 10 or more people. So we would have to make sure that we adhere to that. In addition to that, we took the step to suspend out-of-state business travel. We feel that it's necessary to go back to that step. There are advisories that are coming out that, that we will talk about here shortly, that it was prudent for the city to go ahead and suspend out-of-state travel. We have not taken the further step of suspending employee travel, personal travel yet. But there's something in the works that eventually the state may end up doing that as well. In-state business travel is still allowed with the department head. So if you have a, a meeting conference or something that just absolutely can't be done remotely, that can be authorized by the department head. Mask use, we still continue with the mask use and doing those things. That is the basic change of what we're doing from stage three to stage two. In essence, we were very well prepared through our stages in the beginning of this pandemic and crisis in, in April and May, and when we implemented these policies and procedures, that all we've had to do is to go back, pull these back up, and then make them so that they adjust to, just tweak them a little bit, I should say, so that they adjust and, and represent what it is that we're currently trying to do. Now, the state of Idaho Central District Health recently just put out a, before I get into this advisory, are there any questions about what we're doing as a city with stage two? None? None? All right, I shall continue. Central District Health, uh, issued a, an advisory, Public Health Advisory, on November seventeenth, and what this advisory is, is it is just that. It's an advisory. It is not a mandate. It is not an order. However, with this particular advisory, these are very strongly, uh, worded recommendations of what people should do, what cities should do, and one of the first things is, of course, wear your face coverings. The second is work from home, period. That's what it says. Work from home. Minimize nonessential travel. Suspend visits to, uh, congregate living facilities. Avoid social gatherings. Out, for outings, activities in places of businesses. Business should implement curbside and delivery services. Places of worship should implement virtual services. Discontinue school extracurricular activities. And, uh, of all types, when physical distance cannot be maintained, maintained, and where physical distance can be maintained, but it requires increased breathing, such as band and choir. So cancel band and choir, as well as, uh, extracurricular activities, sports and such. This one's one that, that, that could rub people. Bars, restaurants, breweries, taprooms, wineries, distilleries, takeout and carryout only. No in-dining options. And gyms and other fitness groups, uh, facilities to limit no more than fifty percent capacity. Those are, uh, the direct advisories from Central District Health. Today, Annette and Erin and I sat in on a meeting with Valley County COVID Task Force, and we discussed this with the businesses, uh, with some of the businesses' representatives, uh, those that are involved, and had a, a very in-depth conversation about whether or not the city, uh, should take the lead on what it is that we're trying to do with Central District Health. We have been, uh, at the forefront on being proactive in our response to this COVID pandemic. We were one of the first to implement a mask mandate for the city. We have been very strong supporters of the CDH and their recommendations, the CDC, their recommendations, the recommendations from the state. Counsel has been very supportive of that. We've had a very compliant community. CDH has not made this a mandate, as of yet. However, uh, their next meeting is the second week of December, and they are unsure if it will become a mandate. They are unsure if it will not, but if the numbers continue to rise at the rate that they are, we should anticipate that this would become a mandate. The hospitals across the state are reaching a critical point. Uh, that comes from Dr. Irvin and from Central District Health. They're, they're maxing out, and if these hospitals max out and we locally have no place to transport them, we're going to be in trouble. Uh, so that would beg to, uh, a conversation of, do we as a city and does city council want to take a proactive step in this and continue to be on the forefront and lead in making some of these recommendations actually a mandate? If the state and CDH makes this a mandate, we will still remain under the misdemeanor offense. What we did as a city was make it a notice of violation. It was a civil fine. If it's with the CDH and we're enforcing those, then it is a misdemeanor. That's the only tool they have in their toolbox. They cannot make it anything but a misdemeanor offense. And so I would be open to questions, to comments, to, to discuss this. As recently as two weeks ago, I was contacted by seven law enforcement agencies to see how we as a city implemented our mask mandate, because there were seven agencies across the state that were looking at doing it, and they wanted to do something similar to what we did. And that just goes to show that we've, we have been the leaders in this, and I'm, I'm giving this update and will be asking, what is it that council believes? Should we look into making this a proactive step, or should we just continue to follow the CDH in anticipation that they may do this as well? Questions?
Justin, before we get uh, just the specific questions, are you, are you suggesting that on the table might be all the things that you read off from Central District Health, the strong recommendation, that perhaps all of those things or some subset of those would be at some point, uh, put up, uh, for a resolution or an ordinance, um, with with, I'll call it the traffic citation kind of, traffic ticket kind of, um, um, approach?
So
Or were you looking at just a couple of items? What, what's your thoughts on that?
Uh, I, I would look at several of the items, uh, that if it's their recommendation and their advisory, I would try to, as we've done in the past, to stick as closely to it as possible, uh, because it I'm afraid to say that it's not a matter of if this is going to become a mandate from Central District Health, it is going to be when. And so with that, do we want to go ahead and prepare how we would prefer to respond? If we as a city do not, uh, take a proactive step, and, and I'm open either way, and I, I, I believe Erin and Annette and I've started this conversation, that if we choose to do it, we choose to do it. I would recommend that we stay with the, uh, uh, notice of violation, so that we have something other than the misdemeanor. The key point to this has been and always will be the enforcement aspect, and law enforcement across the nation is very hesitant to prosecute, to enforce criminally these statutes. That's the reason why we as a city stepped outside the box and chose to do it as a, as a civil issue. Uh, the, the prosecution aspect is out the window, because we've issued the one citation that was done in, I believe, April or May, and that still hasn't gone to prosecution, because we can't have court services. And so do we want to bog those courts down? I would like to just, and I think, Annette, correct me if I'm wrong, and, and please step in, you or Erin, either one, what we're looking at is preparing something, should that be a decision that council wants? And so I'm trying to, to gauge the interest and the feedback and direction from council, if this is something that they would be interested in.
I think we're definitely interested in this topic. What's confusing is, um, the language in the Central District Health Advisory.
Yes, sir.
They did that if one of the three health organizations, St. Alphonsus, St. Luke's, or the Veteran Hospital, if they reach a critical condition as, as defined in state law, then they have, they could issue an immediate ordinance or mandate that all of these steps are required. You know, they're required to force a law. So, Mike, before we wade into the next steps, we, I think council would want to be timely and be effective at, at, at this discussion. So do you have any crystal ball about when one of those three health organizations might max out?
So
What would happen before, for our next city council meeting, for example?
Gina Pennell from Central District Health, I, we specifically asked this question today. When? And they do not know when. It could be tomorrow. It could be two weeks. It could be a month. Uh, so there really is no timetable, but they are anticipating, uh, you could hear it in her voice and see it in her mannerisms, that they are anticipating that this is coming. Dr. Irvin was stressing, uh, that this is coming, and he would urge, uh, us to be proactive. However, you have to look at the flip side of this, and how do we package this to our community that we are recommending as a city for you to shut your business and only do remote services, to close your restaurant and only do takeout only, uh, to close your ski business and only, uh, have curbside delivery or home delivery? How, how do we carry that flag and that banner into the, into our city community and support our local community in doing that? And so you have to consider all angles of it. My, my thoughts are, and I will always refer back to the, uh, the civil process, uh, it is much more streamlined for us, and that if this does come back, if we could have that option rather than the misdemeanor, the enforcement is much easier, uh, much quicker for us from a law enforcement standpoint.
I, I think we all agree with you, Chief Williams. What the puzzling part is, and I'd like to hear from Annette and Erin on this. The puzzling part for us as council is, um, so let's suppose two weeks from now, we wake up in the morning and Erin sends out a message to us and it says, "CDH has ruled. Uh, one of the hospitals reached critical mass. These are now in effect." My question to you, um, and I guess to Bill Nichols is, if we don't have something in place, I'm assuming we're too late. We're gonna, we're not going to be able to use the notice of violation, the civil approach. We're going to be under that new law that was issued by Central District Health. If all of a sudden we step out, say, in an emergency meeting a week from now, and decide to do some of these items under the notice of violation, then, as you astutely pointed out, we're risking jumping the gun, um, in, in our citizens' views and in our business. So it is, it's a tough one. But I, um, we're interested in it. We want to do the right thing. So let's continue the dialogue. I'd like to hear from Annette, your perspective, and Erin, and then I'm going to ask council to, um, offer their, their thoughts on this issue. Annette?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Giles. Um, well, it's almost like deja vu back to the spring, before spring break this year. Um, although we know a lot more now than we did then, and our case counts are higher now. Um, but back then, we were debating, you know, should we go ahead because, um, other cities were contemplating doing the mask requirement? We did go before Central District Health issued anything, um, for Valley County. And our reasoning back then was that, um, we are in essence, you know, a suburb, I guess, of the Treasure Valley, and so watching what was happening in the Treasure Valley and being concerned about those folks, um, also being active in our community, because there are many second homeowners from, um, the Treasure Valley that come up here, um, we wanted to make sure that we put things in place that kept our community safe, whether, uh, you know, and that the people that were coming to visit us that didn't live here full-time understood our expectations and our community standards, so to speak, um, before they got here, and that they would please abide by it. Um, then we came across the, the issue Justin has been raising about enforceability, and we revised our ordinance, our order to, um, be a civil, um, penalty or a fine, so to speak, which seemed to work well. Um, that obviously has lapsed, um, but you did reestablish the emergency powers ordinance, so we can put things back in place on our own again. Um, I think the key thing for the council to think about is, um, consistent messaging. Back then, we wanted to make sure that we were in alignment and consistent with what the state was saying and what Central District Health was saying, and we really, um, evaluated the right way and what to do, um, and to be, um, all on the same page about that. And so today, we're faced with, okay, not just a mask requirement, but now there's a whole list of things, um, that are specific to our health district area. It's not, um, like when the governor had these things in place under his order earlier this year. Um, I, part of me says that I don't think the community would be too surprised by any of this, because we've already been here once before with a lot of these same, um, requirements, but they were just issued by the governor's office back then. Um, the other thing to think about is that we're on the hall, verge of the holiday season, so people will be coming here for Thanksgiving holiday, um, as well as, um, the ski resorts opening up, so we'll see a lot of visitors here, uh, once that happens as well. And so I think it's important for us to, um, be ready to implement these things. You don't have to decide tonight. This is your first touch, so to speak. We're not asking you to do that, but we are asking you to start thinking about that and the possibility that, um, if things happen rapidly, we may need to call a special meeting of the council, like we've done before, to issue something. Um, yeah, I think it's tough, and I know that, um, the Chamber of Commerce has had folks inquiring about what types of events and activities will be happening here over the Thanksgiving holiday, because people are planning to bring families here. Um, and so in the interim, in the short-term step, what I've asked Erin to do is, and she can speak to this more specifically, um, is to approach this the same way we did, um, when we were getting ready for spring break, and that's to do a joint travel advisory with our agency partners, the hospital, the fire departments, et cetera, uh, down to the valley to remind them, you know, this is still happening. Here's our expectations. Know before you come up here, um, be aware of whatever limitations we have with services, et cetera, um, just to at least remind everybody, um, before they start traveling over the Thanksgiving holiday about what to expect up here while we figure out our other pieces we may have to put in place. So Erin, I don't know if you want to talk about that, and also give a update on, um, some of our city-sponsored events that we were, um, developing, like the tree lighting and how those are going to change now as well. Oh, I think you
Sure, I'm happy to do that. Um, so firstly, um, you know, speaking to the letter, so I feel like that's our step one, right, is to, you know, notify the public, um, of our cooperative support of CDH. So I guess we're sort of looking for direction tonight regarding that. You know, do we want to, um, enforce, enforce is the wrong word, support CDH and their messaging, um, by encouraging that within our community, more than a simple share of what CDH has put out? Um, and so I drafted a letter, um, and I've gotten a response from, of course, uh, the fire department, St. Luke's, Cascade. In the past, we've also invited the county, um, we've invited the fire districts, um, a mask, a mask group. Um, I expect to hear more in the morning. But, um, the, the letter itself basically speaks to, we want you to know that if you come here, you need to wear a mask and be prepared for things to be different, and of course, protect our mountain playground, which has been our messaging the whole, uh, the whole time. Um, also to encourage people to follow the direction of CDH directly. So, um, I think that is an important message, um, and with your blessing, basically it leaves in, leaders in Valley County and the City of McCall, support Central District Health's advisory to avoid nonessential travel. And then I close at the end by saying, you know, if you do happen to find yourself in our mountains, please protect yourselves. Protect us by wearing a mask and recreate responsibly and learning more about this region before you arrive. So we've gotten a good response so far. Um, if I get a response from everybody else, send that out to all of you prior to release, um, so you have a chance to have eyes on it. Um, so that was our step one. Um, I think our step two would be to talk about whether or not we want to encourage our business owners to follow this advisory specifically and show our support to them. Uh, typically, what we would do is, is send out, you know, sort of the same messaging as CD, CDH and say, hey, this is on the table. In the past, it's been in order. So this one's a little bit more complicated because it's an advisory. So we need to decide how emphatic we want to be with our language, with our business owners. And then the last piece is our own special events. Um, so we've been working really closely with the Chamber of Commerce. Of course, our Parks and Recreation Department is always stellar, and we've, um, gotten together and come up with some really creative ideas on things like our tree lighting. So what we're doing is, instead of a typical tree lighting, um, we're actually doing it virtually. I don't know if Mayor Bob knows it, but he's giving a holiday address, and, um, which we're going to record. And, and then we're also going to do something a little bit different. Um, Garrett Map has worked with Parks and Rec to lay out a trail around McCall where Santa will actually visit different stops along the way to bring candy canes and treats to the community, so that we don't encourage sort of a mass gathering around the tree. Um, so we've also been talking about a lot, a lot of other events as they come down, but we need to be prepared to be ever-changing, and I think our staff is doing a great job in being flexible and adapting to these situations. Um, I think you'll probably all heard, uh, today from my email, that we also canceled, of course, our staff event. Um, it's the right thing to do. It's more than ten people, so we're going to look at some creative ways to, um, celebrate your staff and to thank them, which is something the city council is always sponsored every year. So, um, so I guess step one, I want to know I want to know more information about how you feel about that cooperative letter. And two, how you feel about communicating with our businesses? And those are the, the main direction pieces I think we need for tonight, just to make sure we're setting off on the right foot.
Thank you, Erin. Thanks, Annette. So let's, let's start with step one, which was the letter that you described, Erin, that's trying to educate all of our visitors, I believe. Is that correct? So let me, let me poll the council and see. I believe we're on board with you, but I, I don't. Let me, let me poll the council to make sure that we are. Melanie, how are you feeling about that letter that Erin described? Step one?
You know, honestly, I, I'm, I'm hesitating for some reason. And I, I, I can't explain it. I guess I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say.
Okay. Thank you, Melanie. Councilmember Machazek?
Regarding the letter and communication, I think, I think further communication on those lines and the way Erin's approaching it is good.
Thank you, Mike. Council President Nielsen?
Yeah, communication is important. It would have been nice to see that letter before this meeting so we could at least talk about. And I think really question number one goes back to the question that Mayor asked that I don't think answered was about what happens with if the CDH imposes an order and we don't have something in place?
Yeah, I'm really. Go ahead, Annette.
Well, I was going to say, I know Bill Nichols looked like he was ready to chime in. And we did get information from the city of Boise about how they plan to enforce it late this afternoon that we're looking at. It sounds like they have something maybe in their code already. I don't know, but basically their approach towards the business community sounds, it's pretty aggressive sounding in that they're going to go around and educate everybody first about the rules that the businesses need to follow. And then if they find out about businesses that are deliberately not following them, they're going to suspend their business license for X number of days on the first violation. If they violate again, they get suspended for a longer period of time. And depending on how many times they violate, it goes all the way up to suspending their business license for a year. And then they have to go through some kind of process to reapply. So it's pretty, it's pretty direct enforcement in that respect. We have talked about whether or not the business license was a tool to be used in our case, but we've never, we haven't actually gone there. So I'd be curious if Bill knows more about that avenue in addition to anything that the police department would do.
So if this is my cue to talk, I would say first of all, the, in response to Counselor Nielsen's question, if CDH were to impose some restrictions and if your concern was that because their only enforcement mechanism is that it makes violation a misdemeanor, you could enact an emergency order that mirrors the prohibitive activities, but then under your ordinance, it would make those violations. So it'd be that civil violation. So you could communicate to the, to the citizens and visitors to McCall, we're not trying to put you in jail, but this is serious and there is a fine involved in it. So you would have that option as a community to be able to enact a, an order that's not as severe in penalties, but might match with regard to the prohibitive activities. The concern I would have over the business license piece is that how do you really shut down a business? I mean, if that's really what you're going to do, how do you really shut them down? And to me, that means lawsuit. That means filing a court action, asking a judge to enjoin a business owner from, from conducting business in that spot because they, their license has been suspended. I'm not, personally, I'm not sure that's a great avenue. And particularly in a small town like McCall, it has all kinds of repercussions. It's, it's a little bit more pinpoint to go to the individual and say, here's a fine. And you would have the opportunity, if somebody was a multiple offender, to use the CDH order to then use the misdemeanor piece. We also had some discussions in the spring with the city prosecutor that if somebody disregarded a direction from an officer to, for example, put on a face covering, there likely would also be the ability to prosecute that individual for obstructing an officer, failing to comply with a lawful order. So there are options available to you. I'm just not a big fan of the, using the business license suspension as a, as a tool to gain compliance.
And I, I think we've, this whole year that we've been dealing with this, I think we've done a really good job of having a proactive and pretty positive working relationship with the business community where they feel like they're collaborating together to be proactive and do the right thing. And I don't think we've seen any deliberate defiance of anything. So again, while that's the Boise example that they sent to us today, I agree with Bill. I'm not a big fan of going down that path because of the relationship damage. And I also don't know that it would be necessary because it feels to me like a lot of our businesses have been really on board with doing the right thing all along. And we super appreciate them and want to support them. Our whole effort has been geared more around how do we support our businesses during this time? Keep their employees from getting sick, keep our employees from getting sick, that type of thing. And so I guess that's why the potential of this type of order coming from Central District Health has us a little uncomfortable because it is a different approach to how we've worked with our business community to this point. And it does put us in a really difficult position, I think. But I'm hopeful that they will choose to, on their own, to do, to follow the advice of Central District Health without us having to order anything ourselves. But we may get there just by virtue of Central District Health passing something. So I, I too am super interested in what all the other counselors also have to say on the topic. Again, we want to make sure that we're keeping in mind the big picture of community health and safety and the long-term community fiber, so to speak, stays together, that we don't get torn apart as a result of this pandemic, which hopefully will be over soon with the good news of the vaccines coming out. It feels like we're in this final push. Everything's sort of coming to a head right before, you know, the, the vaccine arrives. And if we can keep it together and keep ourselves working positively in the best interest of the community health and survive all this stuff together, we'll be stronger for it. I, I don't want to see us all fall apart at the last 11th hour. I don't know. Those are just sort of my thoughts at the moment.
Well, Annette, your big picture thoughts, I think we're, we're struggling listening to our questions. You're, we're trying to figure that out too. And we agree with your, your big picture. Those are our goals as well. Seems like we, I'm going to, I'm going to do another sweep of everyone on council tonight. But before I do that, it seems like, based on what you have told us and Chief Williams and Bill Nichols, that maybe we have a couple of options, for example. One would be, we can wait till, we, we can do education, we can encourage and let people know in the business community that we support the spirit and intent of all these strong recommendations. We can do that. And, and we can also say, if and when Central District Health decides that, that within the, the health district, we've reached a critical point and those recommendations become law, that we, as a council, then would, would enact the, let me, notice of violation approach. So we would do that in writing. And even though CDH already enacted them as law, it sounds like Bill said that we could, we could do that in, for our city. We could make the enforcement philosophy be a civil issue, notice of violation. The second approach would be to have an emergency meeting and say, if that happens, we're going to go to a notice of violation, put that on record right now. And I guess a third approach would be to, do like what we did on the mask ordinance, which is very different, which is one, one item. I, I suppose we have, we, we could have an emergency meeting, for example, next week or the first week of December and say, we're not waiting for CDH to lower the boom. We're going to, we're going to take these five items and make them, within the city limits, be law. So those seem like the three kinds of options that we could explore. I believe I got that right. Bill, did you see anything that I said wrong on that?
No, I think that's correct. That's correct.
And I honestly don't know the responsible approach of those three. I'm not advocating for any, any one, trying to explore those with everybody's help. So I'd like to poll council that, based on what you've heard from all of us tonight, what are your thoughts on the urgency and which kind of approach would you feel most comfortable with to be effective? Melanie, I'm going to start with you.
Number one, thanks for that letter, Erin. I just read it and it looks good. And so that makes me feel a little bit more at ease. I mean, it's, it's such a tough call because, you know, I think we all want to do the right thing for our community and make sure that our businesses are still viable and vibrant as well. So, you know, I'm glad we're not trying to make a decision right this moment, is what I would say.
Thanks, Melanie. Councilmember Machazek, what's your thoughts?
Yeah, I have a few. One, I think that collaborating with other agencies is important. I also feel that Justin has consistently brought forth suggestions that are very rational, reasonable, and well-thought-out. I also think that along the lines of the notes that Annette just said, you know, I think a coordinated effort within our community is very important. And in, as part of that, I think that if we are going to consider decisions that affect our businesses, I think we need to get feedback from our businesses. We need to make sure that whatever we're doing, that we're working together on this. I do think there are also some differences between what we're experiencing in our community now versus what we're experiencing this spring. This spring, we were somewhat of an island. We didn't have cases. We were hoping to keep people that were positive, positive from coming here and from bringing it here. At this point in time, we have significant spread within our community. The cases that we see in documentation do not reflect the extent of the cases that are in our community. So there are significant cases within our community. I've personally witnessed people that I am known to be positive that have been in places like the grocery store. So, you know, I think we have significant spread here. I think we need to be conscious of the fact that we're not just trying to keep the outs, you keep folks from the valley from coming here and bringing it here because we already have it here. So, you know, one of the big messaging and one that's a, a hard one to change for people is that, you know, even if you have mild symptoms, we really need people to be staying distanced at home, working from home, all of this advice, and really trying to be conscious of not, not spreading it further within our community. So I do think that's a difference from what we had in the springtime. And the bottom line for me, as we're talking about the bigger picture here, is I really think that as it relates to the businesses, we need to get their, their, their input. We all need to be on board. I think, I, I think Annette said it very well. We're in the, we, we may well be in the final bit of this and it's stressful and it's difficult. But we got to make it there and we got to make it there together as a community. And so I do not want to see the city council just putting down a resolution without having all of the stakeholders having an opportunity to provide feedback for the businesses, our healthcare system. I think we need to be in this together.
Agreed. Thank, well stated, Mike.
Mayor, ma'am, make a statement, please. This is.
Yes, Justin. Go ahead, Chief Williams.
So the, the numbers that we're looking at right now, they're anticipating mid-December for critical junction of capacity numbers, according to what the CDH was saying. The numbers that they have up on their website are not accurate. They're far less than what they actually are. I would say that CDH, Gina Pennell, and Dr. Irvin were very excited to try to get support from the council and they volunteered to come in and, and speak if they needed to be here. That's something that in the next meeting, if you would like, during the COVID update, I can reach out to them and have them come in and give a better medical explanation of where we were at, or where we are at and what their recommendations would be, if you would like. We continue to work with the Chamber of Commerce. Erin has done a fantastic job on putting these messages out and trying to be proactive with that. And so I, I'm, I'm happy to hear that we can continue forward with that. But if you would like additional information in the next meeting as you ponder what to do, I'd be more than happy to have Dr. Irvin and Gina Pennell from CDH join in on the meeting.
Well, I think we'd really be interested that, in that, I don't know if it should be put off till the end of the meeting or perhaps that's a higher priority to make it at the beginning of the meeting. But I think we would be very interested in that. Sounds like your read, Chief Williams, is that we probably won't see an edict or a law from Central District Health prior to December 3rd. So that would be timely. And that would give us a chance to, to what Annette talked about being so important and Councilmember Machazek, work with our business community and see how that goes and get their input. Seems like that would be a, a really rational approach.
Their, their next meeting, I believe, is the first week of December. So that if it came out the third, fourth, it would go into effect on the fifth. So we should be able to have the meeting on the third prior to CDH, unless something drastic happens and we have a, a serious explosion over the next two weeks, which very well could happen. If you, if you look at the graphs and you see what our infection rate is right now across the state and within Central District Health, it is, it is far greater than what we've experienced thus far. Far greater. And so if it came to that point and we're seeing that that's coming out, my recommendation would be to have an emergency meeting. Gina Pennell did mention if it was necessary, and thanks, Erin, for reminding me of that, that if it was necessary, that she would be available for an emergency meeting as well as I think Dr. Irvin. And I'm not trying to pressure anybody to make any decisions right now. My sole purpose for this was an educational process to advise you of what we foresee coming down the road. The one thing that we have been able to do effectively with our EOC throughout this entire event is project what's coming. We've been very lucky. We've been very blessed in that we've been accurate in our predictions and our recommendations and our actions. and our recommendations and our actions. And this is coming. There is no doubt that that this will happen. It's just a matter of when, not if. And so it was necessary to not to bring this to your attention and plant these seeds so that you can start thinking about it and realize that regardless of how we feel about it, more than likely, this directive is going to come from Central District Health. And when it does, how do we as a city carry forth that message and how do we implement that?
Thank you, Chief Williams. I'm gonna move along to Council President Nielsen and then I'd like to come back to you, Annette. So help me remember that. I'm getting a little bit tired moderating tonight. So let's do that in order. Council President Nielsen, your thoughts and wisdom you want to impart to us?
I don't know if we've done this word here. I think I think Mike said it well, that, you know, our community needs to be involved with this. We all need to to be in this together. And back to the communication part, which is gonna be critical. And I think that you know, the the message that that Justin just finished giving us, I think, is important to get out to our community, our business community. That that in all likelihood, things are going to be changing. And I think that we have a little bit of, hopefully, we have a little bit of time, but I think that it's extremely important to get out that message that that, you know, we need to be prepared and we need to we need to be together in this. You know, I I don't know what to say, really. I mean, I I I feel okay after having that the question answered about the, you know, the enforcement end of things. I feel kind of okay about that. I couldn't quite tell the difference between approach two and three that you laid out there. As far as when, yeah, if we adopt the, I'm bad at taking notes tonight, the violation approach.
Yeah, so let me let me try to answer that. The concept I had was we might have an emergency meeting where we would have Dr. Irvin and other experts help us, you know, give us some of the background. And this emergency meeting would be before, in in theory, it would happen before Central District Health issued an edict or ordinance, you know, actually making this effective law. And our our one approach would be to say, well, if if they and if we reach critical mass at a hospital, one of the three systems and Central District Health issues this law, the City of McCall will enforce this law with a notice of violation approach using a civil, the civil issue approach like we did with the mask ordinance. So that's one approach. Then the other approach would be to have an emergency meeting before December 3rd and you would actually jump the gun. I would, using my language, you would jump the gun and say, we feel so strongly based upon our coordination with with our businesses and with the medical situation that we are going to, we're not going to wait for Central District Health. We're going to make it a ordinance right now. I don't know which of those are the best. I don't think tonight we have enough information to to know. And I think it would be jumping the gun to make any decision like that tonight. But I think our council is open to considering those three options. And I, that's how I view it as the difference, Colby, if that helps.
Yeah, I think that's helpful. I guess I would kind of lean in favor of you know, waiting until Central District Health, unless we, until Central District Health impose that ordinance, unless we have really strong, you know, community conversations and support from our community to to further restrict our daily lives, as it were.
Right, that's a that's a big deal. If we call that option three, jumping the gun, as I call it, that's that's a really big deal. And I think it has a real downside to the unity that we talked about between our business community, our citizens and the city. So we'd have to be extremely careful on that. Option two would be, I think, a little more palatable. And it sounds like legally, option one, where we don't have to have an emergency meeting until the CD, CDH, Central District Health announces that it's has the force of law. Bill said we could still enact a local ordinance that talks about how how these cases would be civil issues and we would issue notice of violation as opposed as opposed to criminal.
Yeah, thanks for that clarification. And and I guess that, you know, ultimately, I think that you know, we should make a big push over the next two weeks to inform our community, have conversations with our community. And, you know, it's hard not to, you know, run around screaming, saying, oh, it's, you know, all gonna fall apart. It's all gonna come down on us. But we need to be able to impart the urgency to to have these conversations over the next couple of weeks and and have have businesses aware that, you know, of what's you know, what CDH is considering and what it might mean for our community. So I I think the communication piece is critical right now.
It is. And I think I think council's very supportive of that. So I'm gonna I don't think there's anything more that I could add. I'd like to go back to Annette and Erin to guide us, but you've certainly heard some good communication and heartfelt feelings that and thoughts from the council. So help help lead us and be effective on these big picture items.
Okay, Erin, did you want to chime in on the community engagement?
Yeah, yeah, I did. So I actually made some notes as all of you were speaking, but to just to back up slightly. So every single time that there has been any sort of advisory that's come out of either the state or Central District Health, I've sent a mass email to all of our business owners and kind of let them know, hey, we're here. Here are some tools and resources. And just for the record, I've only ever received one, just one single email of somebody said that we're encroaching on their rights, which was not a factual statement in that moment. So usually I get really great emails back of people just seeing us. And I think we've felt really connected to our business community. So what I've heard is when I send out this next email that says, hey, everybody, maybe you heard about this advisory that was released on the 17th, we start by, you know, as usual, thanking them for their efforts thus far, right? So we we typically do that. And then maybe give them some guidance, like Colby said, in in guidance on what's to come and maybe how to prepare themselves for that and what tools we have available to support them. And then ask our businesses what they currently have in place to serve the public. So that'll help us gauge compliance that's already happening through the advisory. And then ask, of course, what we can do to help them through this next phase of what's to come. So that's kind of what I've sketched out in in hearing from all of you tonight. And I usually copy you on those emails when they go out. So you see them. We've also made some changes to our website. So if you go to my communications page now, all of our archives newsletters are actually listed there. So you can actually go back and read anything we've ever sent. So just to know, if you ever want to catch up on any of that. But hopefully I captured that correctly and please let me know if I missed anything.
Thank you, Erin.
Yeah, well, I was gonna say, I think that is what I heard as well. And we will definitely work on the education, community conversation piece for the next week or two. And I'm gonna assume that we're going to have a big conversation on this topic at your December 3rd meeting unless something comes to our attention from Gina at Central District Health. And then if that does happen, then of course, we will contact you about scheduling a special meeting. But I think for now, we plan on doing it December 3rd at your regular meeting. We'll invite Dr. Irvin and Gina to participate. And we will make sure that whatever we're doing is keeping the best interest of the whole community in mind and trying to have continue this whole effort of working together to combat this and not blaming or shaming anybody or anything like that. So I think we've heard great feedback from all of you. It's been super helpful. And we will take that and go with it.
Thank you, Annette, and thanks. Thanks, Bill Nichols and and city staff for giving us a great briefing. It's this is, we're under some really tough times. We're trying our best as a council and I I know you are doing your best and we really appreciate it. Let's move on to our last item, a review of our upcoming meeting schedule. Annette?
Okay, let me get that pulled up here. All right. So since I was out, I think I saw some emails back and forth with Bessie Jo about this upcoming ICrimp training. And so, Bessie Jo, do you want to clarify that on the schedule here that was in the packet, just to make sure?
Sure, I do do that. I don't know why we're echoing. Yeah, so the ICrimp training training is for December 11th at 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM. I did hear from three of the four council that that works for them. And I have notified Meg to to include the library board. So the training will be an hour approximately of library training. And then the other hour is on ethics.
Great, thank you. And then, as you know, we are accepting applications on your behalf for the vacant city council seat. And you've already agreed to interview people on December 2nd. So that will be an interesting one as well, given the timing with the topic we just talked about and having a brand new person joining your team potentially the next night, a real big decision-making topic there. So you will be busy that first week of December. Let's see here. We have a bunch of housekeeping items on December 3rd, but depending on what happens with the COVID situation, I may move some of those around so that the meeting doesn't go super long. But my goal had been to get our policy updates done on the administrative side before we go into the new year. And that has to do with purchasing and personnel and things like that. So they're not exactly the most exciting topics if you don't work in that realm on a regular basis, but they're super important for the efficient running of the of the city's business. And so I do want to get to those before the end of the year if we can. But again, we may move some of that around to make time for the COVID discussion. And I made a note that we should have that at the beginning of the agenda with Dr. Irvin and Gina invited. Moving on to the 17th, earlier tonight, you asked Rick to bring back the airport fees. So we'll add that back on.
December 17th, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Yep. And then the special work session in December on the 18th is the report back on the Highway 55 corridor study that we did together with ITD, which is going to be really informative on what is the long-term plan for that and the Dine Hard Boydston exchange as well. So I'm really looking forward to that. I think we'll be starting to create a roadmap out of that, no pun intended. And then we get into the new year already. So we do have a question mark about when and how to hold your council retreat. We typically do that in January and go through some more in-depth items with you, revisit committee assignments, that type of thing. And so be thinking about that. And if you have any particular items you want to do a deeper dive on as part of that, we're happy to make that happen for you. And I think I'm gonna stop there and see if there's anything councillors would like to add to the agenda that you didn't already see here.
Melanie, anything you would like to add?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Mike?
None to add, just for the one, I think it's already probably on the radar screen for an ad is with discussion about COVID and all of this, that maybe we put that at the first thing on the meeting for that particular meeting?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Colby?
No, I don't think I have anything to add. What's the the interest level on city council?
The last time I looked, and Bessie Jo had would have more current information, but the last time I looked, we had four applicants. And I had one person call me with some questions, but I haven't seen them submit an application. So I don't know if they will or not.
And what's
Yeah, we've had, we've had four. And the deadline is Monday at 5:00.
Wait, thanks. That was my next question. Yeah, my only concern is I really want to be at that December 18th meeting and it's gonna be really hard for me. That's our scheduled opening day here at noon. But I guess we'll see what happens with the COVID stuff. I'm gonna do my best because I would really like to be at that meeting.
Okay.
So this is Bob. I don't have any further items to add. I just wanted to make sure that December 11th, we're doing some ethics training and ICrimp training. And what time does that meeting start?
1:00 PM.
And it'll be roughly two hours till 3:00 PM?
Yeah.
All right. I want to make sure I captured that correctly.
I'll send out the the team's invite tomorrow.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
So that means I believe there's no special meeting then November 20th, right, Bessie Jo? So meeting tomorrow, there's no meeting tomorrow. You guys get to Friday morning back. That's a positive way to end the meeting.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn, Mike? Thank you. Colby made the first motion, so I'm gonna list Mike as seconding it. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Everybody, happy Thanksgiving. Be safe.